It is 6:30 in Reed Field, Maine. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this, the 11th of April Select Board Meeting. Tonight, we have a full agenda, but we will begin with the minutes of our last meeting while we pull this up. I want to remind our members, as I remind myself, please speak clearly into your microphones. We've gotten some good feedback about being loud enough to be heard, and we appreciate it, but I always like to start with that reminder. Item 22114 is the minutes from our two, our past two meetings, the Select Board Meetings of March 14th and March 28th, 2022. Eric?
So Angelica is working diligently to get comfortable with our format. So what we have is the minutes from March 14th included as an addendum to the packet. So those are available on the website. March 28th, we're still wrapping up. So this one, we have a placeholder here. We can either, depending on the comfort level of the board, vote on the 14th, or just take them together at the next meeting, which would probably be my recommendation at this point.
Take them both at the next meeting while we wait. Okay. That sounds good. Shall we just table this then? This item, 2214?
I'd just like to add, though, that I read all the way through them, and I thought Angelica did a great job. And I really appreciated adding in a lot of the banter, if you will, the discussion back and forth. I know it's not required, but we have asked other committees to try and add more of that anecdotal part. And so I think it's really helpful. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much, Angelica. Then we move right on to item 22. Should we do a motion to table that?
Motion to table.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor to table that? Thank you very much. We will approve those minutes at our next meeting. Item 22115 warrants 38 through 41. I think I send it over to our friend Carol. Hello, hello, hello.
Hello.
Whenever you would like to begin and tell us about.
Okay, I would love to. So warrant 38 and 39. 38 has sales fees of $7,253 and some change, and payroll $26,216 and some change. Warrant 39 has various vendors. And that includes, the Cobby Sea Watershed District is $77,979 for assessment. Casco Bay Advisors, I believe that is broadband, it says consultant planning for 411.
Correct.
Fire tech, Class A foam and site inspection, $2,513. That may have to do with our readiness, perhaps. I'm not sure if that's maybe just normal maintenance or some of our readiness.
Routine inspections for equipment, yeah.
Mainland consultants for the ball field, 453. New England Salt, $5,425. Perkins Thompson's, that's for lawyer fees, 472. RS Leonard is landscape architect, $2,847. I believe that's the ball field, maybe. And that's it for warrants 38, 39. The grand total of both is $119,761.35.
I'll make a motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants 38 and 39 in the amount of $119,761.35. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much, Carol. Would we like to do 40 and 41, or are those, is that the weird same-day one that you're looking?
It's on tonight.
Oh, you have that? Okay. Sounds great, Carol.
40 and 41. 40 has various vendors, $51,263. And I will go through that. That includes Affinity LED lights, $1,385. Library books, 274. Central Maine computer tech, $1,736. Cushion constructions winding down for the winter, $10,036. Dump truck maintenance, $960. Landscape architect, again with the ball field, $2,900. Petty Flaherty lawyer fees, $940. And World of Flags for the cemetery, 429 and 12. Is that just regular something we do all the time for Memorial Day?
Yes, that's the annual flag purchase for the little ones that go on the graves from Memorial Day, essentially through the end of the season, through Veterans Day.
Okay, so they do that, but they're a small version, not what you were talking about, Kathy. That's a much larger.
Right.
Oh, those were.
That was Rees Across America.
Yeah.
At Christmas?
Right.
Okay, so we're way ahead of it. Okay, right. So that's just normal cemetery expenses. And then state fees, $1,445. And another state fees, $5,054. And then warrant 41 was payroll, $24,481. So a big whopping total of 40, where it's 40 and 41 altogether, $75,745.65.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hold please. I just want to double check. In the packet, I have a different. Yes, ma'am. 65? Yep.
But up above, it has the number that Carol had.
Right.
I took mine off of, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry.
Do you know which one it should be, Eric?
It should be for, so 38 and 39, we addressed already. So the number ought to be the 75. It's just a second here.
Sorry.
And 11, they are not matching.
So the 24, so it should be the 76,045.65.
Gotcha. Okay.
What's the discrepancy?
So I'll make a, go ahead.
2481.
Just wondering what the discrepancies is.
It looks like it's $700.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, why?
Yeah, that's something I need to figure out right now. I don't see anything on there that's in that amount.
Well, I would just take, if the correct one is the 76045, I would take a motion for that one.
So the warrant recap should show what that, you know, that total amount is. So it, so the 51, 2. Okay, so, well, let's see, so 51. 263.
Yeah.
51563.
Yeah.
So it should be the 51263 for that, and then the others should add up. So, yeah.
So it's 300 off, it looks like.
So it's the lower, the 75, 745?
We're going to get to that.
Really quick here.
Yeah.
Yeah, go for it.
Yep, it looks like they just entered the wrong number.
51.
No worries. Just make sure we get it right, and that way.
Oh, yeah, they put a 2, a 5 instead of a 2.
Yeah, that's all, that's what it was.
They just, I think, put the wrong number down on the warrant summary.
Okay.
Instead of 51263, they put 51563.
Gotcha.
So that should be $300 lower. So that's absolutely right.
So I'll make a motion to approve the warrants for $75,745.65.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept warrants 40 and 41 in the proper total of $75,745.65. Is there any more discussion? Very well. All in favor? Thank you very much. And thank you, Carol, for your review. How many, are you still going on this?
No, it's all Sean's now.
Oh, all right, Mr. Keegan. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate that. We move now to Select Board Communications. If any members of the Select Board would like to address anything, they may do so now. Go for it, Sean.
Yes, I just wanted to highlight Reed Field Rec's Easter at Hunt this weekend, which is at the ball fields from 10 to noon. On the 16th, there will be candy, prize baskets, golden eggs, fun. And if you go to our Facebook page, not only is there a flyer, but it's like a graphic flyer that shows butterflies and beautiful things coming at you, thanks to our highly talented Kevin Keller.
Now, was this sponsored by the RSU?
No, it is not. Do you see that?
I just wanted to make sure.
Sponsored by RSU, it's just the rec.
At the Fairgrounds Ball Field?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Nice.
Yes, the 16th, which you said was this Saturday.
This Saturday.
And it might not even snow this year.
Yes. It's from, it's from 10 to 12.
Ralph?
To follow up on Sean.
Please.
The tick season is upon us, so advise parents to be very, very careful and check. Check everybody all the time because apparently we didn't have a severe enough winter, even with all that ice, to really diminish the reproductive cycle. So they're out there, and anything we do in the fields, you need to be careful.
Great. Anything else? All right, we move on. It's now, we have 10 minutes for town staff reports. The treasurer's report, we have first. Eric, whenever you're ready.
All right, thanks, Dennis. So the treasurer's report covers the month of March. Check reconciliation was completed through March 31st, 2022. The accounts are in balance, and no unusual activity was observed. The audit, we are in process. We've got draft documents. Teresa and I actually have another meeting with the auditors tomorrow to continue wrapping up that process. Looking forward to getting that done because it's been a long time coming. But again, we had a late start. With respect to the budget, the budget is effectively complete less the final approval of the Select Board and Budget Committee. And our new public hearing, our next public hearing, is on June 2nd, 2022, at 6:30 PM here at the town office and via Zoom and other avenues. I do want to point out that we'll have ongoing public outreach and education, including the mailer that we send out that includes the warrant explanations, as well as some additional information specific to particularly the fairgrounds project and the broadband project, which are both ongoing, and we continue to get new and better information on those as things move along. Comments on the month of March. We should be about 75% expended for both revenues and expenses. The receipts are down significantly for the month, but that's in large part due to a difference in real estate payments, which we often see based upon when the due dates fall. Also, the more, with the amount of money people have in their pockets right now, it appears as though we've had a really good take rate with folks paying current and past amounts. So that's, that was paid early, which is good. And so that can make a difference in the latter months of the due period. Let's see. So revenues are up less than 1% for the month, related in large part to other revenues, but again, it's a small overall change. The revenues are up 10% for the year-to-date, so that's a much more positive number, but one that I think will diminish a little bit. We should see at the end of the fiscal year, you know, 5% to 7% over projections, which would be, which would be just fine. Expenses are up significantly for the month, primarily due to administrative expenses, online, excuse me, solid waste, and road and drainage work. We did have to buy another couple truckloads of salt and pay some fuel premiums to wrap up the winter maintenance work. Expenses are down for the year, mostly related to capital expenses being down. It's almost an identical match there. And I just wanted to point out that although we have variability on a monthly basis, when we look at the amount of expenditure or receiving that's coming in for, for the year, we're actually very close to where we ought to be in most departments. You know, it should look about 75% for the year-to-date, and that's what it does in most cases. I report oftentimes on the prior year period, just so you can have a comparison. But when you have an odd year, it can make the comparison a little bit difficult to follow. So I just wanted to reassure you and say that things are looking good, even though there's some variability. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes, go ahead, Ralph.
State revenue on track, and do they owe us any substantial amounts that we should receive before June?
It is on track, and they don't owe us anything. They do pay essentially monthly. And so we are actually, let me look here really quickly. I have that one number ready. State revenue sharing, we budgeted $225,000, and so far, they come in at $318,000. So that was one of the years we budgeted conservatively, and they're just exceeding our expectations.
Any other questions for Eric regarding the financial report?
Job well done. Thank you.
Yes, we move on to the town manager report.
All right, this one's got a bit more diversity, and I'll try to go quickly. So I'll start with administration and personnel, and I want to say that our new staff, all of them are really settling into their positions and doing an exceptional job of becoming familiar with the work that needs to be done and the processes involved. Their training is ongoing, but I just wanted to point out that they've all settled in quite nicely, and it's great to have all the departments fully staffed, which has been, man, close to a year without having that. So it's great. The town office will be closed for Patriots Day on Monday, April 18th, 2022, and I will be out of office for most of the April vacation week, that same week. I'll be available for emergencies and things like that, and attending a few meetings, but generally unavailable outside of that. The comprehensive plan is the next item that I want to cover. The committee is set to meet this month for the first time in a couple. We had a brief break to reset and deal with just some challenging situations that we had in front of us. We are interested in creating some unique and creative public outreach opportunities. So if anybody has any suggestions, please contact Jess Gordon or Matt Nazar. We, I think Heritage Days is going to be a great opportunity, and I expect I'll be asking one of them to maybe help out with some of the planning around that, Dennis. And, but we really do want to get, you know, some broad and interesting public outreach from different angles, not just from meetings or, you know, boring surveys. Moving on, Reed Field Corner Sidewalk and Traffic Safety. This is getting into some of the, one of the Select Board goals that we've been working on for a few years now. We are still planning on to issue the RFP for Design Services for the Church Road Reed Field Corner Sidewalk. Design work is complete for the area in front of the Masonic Hall, and RFP will be issued for that piece now that we have the design elements in place, including construction documents, which is excellent. Design work is in process for the intersection of P Ridge Road and Nickerson Hill, and that's that one, we have the sharp turn that's migrated onto the gentleman's property. The DigSafe work has been completed for South Road sign installation at the elementary school, and also DigSafe has been done for the crosswalk signs at Kent's Hill. We had a request for some additional signage there. And then installation should be complete within the next few weeks for those items. We did also purchase two central line crosswalk signs. These are the weighted ones that go on the central line. We're going to try those out in a couple locations in town on 17. We'll see how they go. We definitely can't put those in at the intersection, the four-way intersection on Reed Field Corner, because there's already a traffic control system there, the stoplights. And so you can't duplicate like that, which makes sense. But we can put them by the beach, and we'll try one out by Kent's Hill and see if people run them over or not.
Yep.
Okay, so the affinity lighting, you mentioned that that one, Carol, that was the first payment, and the second one is actually on the next coming warrant, but they're done their job. So all five of those lights are installed, and CMP will begin billing us for electricity only on their next cycle. So we're ready to start looking at the next round, which is going to be talked about on the warrant.
Install North Road, it looked wonderful.
Good, good. Yeah, those are 15-watt bulbs, and it's amazing how much light a 15-watt, 15-watt LED.
15.
Yeah. Yeah, 1.5. Amazing stuff.
Eric, are there any in the budget for next year?
We have five that are on the warrant and the budget.
Awesome.
All right, so moving on, the fire sprinkler system at the fire station, that RFP process remains suspended until we have a full detail of the permitting requirements from the Fire Marshal's Office. Moving on to maintenance and infrastructure, roads will likely remain posted for the remainder of the month of April. We've had a lot of rain. The frost just left the ground not long ago, and so we're taking a little bit of time to let things dry out before we remove those weight limit signs. An RFP for winter maintenance for the service in the 2022-2023 season was issued. We had four folks, different companies show up at the pre-bid meeting. Unfortunately, no one submitted a bid, and so we are working on trying to negotiate with one or two of those providers to see if we can get a proposal from them. It's a tricky situation that we're faced with at this point, and I think that we will get at least one, if not two, of those prospective service providers to give us numbers. Unfortunately, I think they're going to be higher, so I did add an extra $50,000 to the budget, and that'll show up on the warrant as well to cover what is, I think, again, going to be another increase in that expense. And I'll beat Catherine to it and say that at this pace, we're going to need to look at the possibility of providing that service in-house, because we're approaching $400,000 for, you know, 35 miles of roadway, which is, which is really, really high.
Really high.
Yeah, really high, really.
I just think we need to look at what, any alternatives that we have.
Yes.
And, I mean, if someone comes in with a contract and they want multi-year at $400,000, I think that's crazy. I think we go with the shortest we can get from somebody. I don't know what that would be. I mean, of course, if they're only willing to take a multi-year contract, then that's what we would have to do, but.
Was the last one a multi-year?
Yes.
Yes.
Four with a, right?
Well, it was. Well, we have a one-year kicker with Cushion right now. That was kind of, again, we found ourselves in a similar situation. So we had just on the one year, John's not in the business, or getting out of the business of winter maintenance. He's going to remain and do summer work, but he's not interested in doing plowing. But, so we had, in the past, we've had three- to five-year contracts, and we've had, this last year was a one-year, and then I think, again, this year, we might see another one-year situation. For better or for worse. All right, so cemetery work will begin this week. Spring street sweeping, removing all that roadside sand, is scheduled for the end of April. The maintenance team has done an outstanding job of cleaning up, organizing, and improving safety at all of our municipal buildings. So I want to thank Ben, Matt, and Steve specifically for all their effort. This is the best I've ever seen our facility's look, so they're doing an exceptional job in those buildings. And now that things are warming up, they're going to move on to the outside and continue with that good work, I think. Let's see, several capital projects remain in queue, and I'm working to manage those as best I can with prioritizing other work, including the town meeting, broadband and fairgrounds projects that have taken some prominent roles recently. Moving on to transfer station, and this is the last item I have, and I'll stop talking. The electronic payment system is fully operational and has been very well received, so folks can pay with debit and credit cards. I believe there is a minimum. I don't recall exactly what it is, but the financing or the financial system seems to be working. Teresa is able to reconcile the payments. All of it is doing, finally, what we intended, which was to make it more convenient for residents and also saves time and effort for staff, because we don't have to duplicate the same information three times. It's put on the computer when they enter it at the facility, and then it comes to us, and it's in a tabular form already. So we have a series of projects lined up for the next few months, including the start of the next fiscal year in July. They will improve safety and the look and function of the facility. They include finishing the partial remodel of the Brown Building to include reopening of the swap shop, the repairing of damaged concrete sections of curbing at the hoppers and bins, and that will help add longevity and also allow them to support a new railing and gate system that's going to be installed, so we will have a consistent barrier to help keep people safe, and it will be more durable than what's there now and permanent, so that'll help with a few different issues. We are also looking to clean up and repurpose the MSW Compactor Building, so that's going to have some different function, but also just, it needs a touch-up. We will be installing underground electrical to the attendant booth and better securing that building, securing as an attachment to the earth, not so much in security. We will be reinstalling underground electric to the E-Waste Container, and then also running that underground electric further to a new utility pole by the white goods area. And then we will have area lighting around that, hitting the white goods area, the brush pile, all of that stuff, so that next fall and winter, we will be in a very good spot to have full area lighting when we need it in the dark months. And so I just want to thank Karen Peterson, who's done amazing work and has been very helpful in moving these projects forward. I finally feel like we're getting our arms around the maintenance of that facility, and it's really, really good to see.
Excellent.
So that's my town manager's report.
Any question? Yeah, go ahead.
I do. So back to when you say signs at Kent's Hill, is that for the Methodist Church, or is that for the school?
Yes, so what we have done is we have like three crosswalks there in the span of about a quarter mile. So what we have started to do is we put a 300-foot notice on each end of that zone, basically. And it's important to note, we don't have a school zone set up there. It's not set up to be a school zone. We could look at that long-term, but right now, we just have the regular crosswalks. So we have a notice about 300 feet before you get to that first crosswalk, and then one coming the other direction from Fayette, about 300 feet before you get to the first one. That will help slow people down. We may want to put a notice before every single one of those crosswalks, because people have a real problem there. I think that the in-lane, the central line crosswalk signs will help, but we'll have to see how those go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for doing something.
Yeah.
I remember we had one in the past at the post office crosswalk, that rubber thing in the middle of the road.
Really? Okay. They weren't supposed to, but.
I don't know if it still exists. It's probably.
Oh, you mean at Reed Field Corner or something like that? Oh, Kent's, okay. I thought you said the post office here. Okay, sorry. No, that would be appropriate up there.
Right.
Ralph, go ahead, buddy.
I have three issues, items, issues. I have issues all over the place, but that has not germane to me. Comprehensive plan, I do hope that in addition to the outreach at Heritage Days, that that group will compile a comprehensive mailed survey to all the residents of the town. As tedious as that may be, I think it's going to be the group's best hope for representative sampling at some appreciable scale as to what the folks in the town are thinking about and what they want.
Okay.
Number two, sprinkler system. I understand we're kind of on hiatus right now, but where are we with the Fire Marshal's Office? Because that, to my mind, is either the enabler or the impediment to the process that we had envisioned within the scope of the money we have budgeted.
Yeah. No, so I communicated with them a couple months ago, but we haven't done anything since. So it is on hold.
Okay, well, I would suggest that perhaps we begin to act preemptively to build, I hate to do this, but I think we need to, we probably need to look for some legislative support if we don't get the answer we want for a statutorily approved system that maybe the Fire Marshal's Office doesn't like. Because I think, from what I last heard, that was, that was the direction we were hearing we were going to be pointed in, and we can't afford to do that simply. It's a budget buster.
Potentially.
Our outdoor water storage tank with no location to put it. We have to be prepared for the reality that perhaps the Fire Marshal's Office isn't going to be as helpful as we hoped they would be. And I really think that it's important that we begin to act in a preemptive fashion, anticipating this reality and doing it as you know how to do in a very diplomatic fashion. anticipating this reality and doing it as you know how to do in a very diplomatic fashion. So we don't raise the hackles on the. I am really concerned that this is not going in the expedited fashion that I thought it would when we began to to initiate this process. So I would, I would think that we would plan worst case and and if we have to dig in. And then the second, and the last, the last issue or concern is the fee arrangement at the at the transfer station. I think you have probably told us once or twice and I have kind of probably forgotten. But I'm assuming that the credit card fee is built into the charge so that the town gets full value of the charge.
The the processing fee is charged to the user of the card. Yep.
All my issues are now done.
Well, don't speak too soon. Go ahead, Ken.
To clarify, it's not built into the fee, it's added on to each person's fee. So the fees are fixed and then if you pay with your credit card, there's an additional piece.
My concern was that the town would lose revenue to the credit card companies.
Eric wouldn't let that happen. Eric, is the the swap shop still on pace for May first?
I believe so. I haven't checked in recently, but we've, we had some hurdles that we got over, so I think that we're we're on pace.
May first?
May first.
Is that Facebook-able?
Yes.
I've been advertising it in Messenger.
Right. Well, very well. Anyone, go ahead, Sean.
Where will the parking be for that now?
Same place as it is.
At the end of the building.
Yep, so those those eight or ten spots there. Yep, okay, yep. Long term, we will be looking at replacing those falling apart trailer backs. That those will be removed and we will have nose-in parking there that we can then use for.
I just feel like it's been so long.
Yeah.
And now we have the attendant booth. It might be, it's confused, it's different, it's confusing.
Well, the important piece, and we'll have to make sure that we do this well. I don't know who's going to do it, but you can't be parked in the stall where you are to do your trash and then walk across traffic. To go to the swap shop. You need to pull over and park and go because that's pedestrian safety.
Right.
And there are people who come up in that third lane, the very leftmost one, who go straight through after stopping to like drop off brush.
Yep.
Things like that that aren't going into the stalls.
Well, that's a good point. I will make make a note too that we should be, you know, advertising and I guess reeducating folks about the protocol for that facility so that we don't have any issues.
I I had put in the Messenger that we would, you know, put up the new stuff for the May issue. You know, great, where to park, where not to park, where to walk, what you can put in, what you can't. The idea is that it'll be just like dropping off your trash. You'll say, when you get to the attendant booth, I have items for the swap shop. They'll ask you what they are. Oh, I'm going to put my TV there. Well, no, you can't do that because that doesn't go there. You can put your other items there. Because that's a way to screen it and that that was one of the biggest problems we had with it previously was that people were putting things in that didn't belong.
Yep, absolutely. All right.
Okay, great. Very well. Anything else for that? Very well. We move to our boards, committees, commissions and departments. We have five minutes for this, but I don't think we need this. We have heard in this packet minutes from the Trails Committee of January twenty-sixth of this year. Broadband Committee of March ninth, Cemetery Committee of February fourteenth and the Board of Assessors Minutes of January tenth. Any comment on that from the Select Board? Very well, we move on. Item, our next item is for Public Communications. Members of the public may address the Select Board. I'd like to ask first if anyone online joining us via Zoom would like to speak. Please unmute yourself and join us, otherwise. Look like anyone? Good. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. We move on now to a point. You have to go right up here, sir. Go right up there, Bob, to the podium and speak in, yep. And just say your, just say your name, so everyone on the. Yeah, thank you.
There was a report of construction work at the center of town at the intersection and a warrant for that. I forgot the amount, but there were several designs that are being prepared and were approved. I'd like to see some of those and if they have anything to do with the fire department or the space between the fire department and the parking outside of that, I'd like to see what, how that that is addressed.
Okay.
I don't think those are being addressed at this time. Right now, we're just looking at what's in front of the Masonic Hall.
Yeah, so there's no impact to the Emporium Building or the buildings that you own, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Or formerly owned.
Second issue, last, or I don't know if it was last time or one of the other previous meetings, you mentioned that there was work being prepared for a new warrant prepared by the Planning Board. Is that in the process being submitted?
Yes, it's actually being considered at the, they they had a public hearing on it previously and they the Select Board will be approving, I believe, that those changes to move forward tonight.
Okay, and I didn't see a copy of that.
It's included in the Select Board packet.
Oh, okay, all right. I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. We move on to appointments, reappointments and resignations. We have five minutes set aside for this. Item twenty-two, one sixteen is to consider the appointment of slate of ballot and election clerks. If the Select Board looks in your packet, you can see our slate of election clerks for the June twenty-twenty-two election. We usually will accept these as a slate rather than go through them individually. If anybody has any questions, now would be the time. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Move the slate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the slate of election officer ballot and election clerks. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Very well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, absolutely. Great, great point, Sean. Thank you very much for taking care and all of you for volunteering to help with the election. Which I might add is at Kent Hill, following our Kent Hill School. Following our our past practice, I think, of the last three elections.
Yes, and that will be ongoing. I've talked with Chris Chaney and they're very, very eager and willing to help us out and provide that on an ongoing basis for the town to use for our elections.
That's great. That's a great resource and we appreciate that. Item twenty-two, one seventeen is to consider the appointment of Robin Lint as the Warden and Moderator for the June Town Meeting. You can also find that information in your packet. Any questions?
Go ahead, Sean.
I make a motion to appoint Robin Lint as Warden Moderator for the vote in June fourteenth.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Robin Lint as the Warden Moderator for the June Town Meeting. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much and thank you, Robin, still serving the town even now. Item twenty-two, one eighteen is to consider the appointment of Lee Livingston to the Cemetery Committee. You can see that Lee's information is also in the packet for him. Looks like from his current term until what looks like.
June thirtieth to round things out.
Okay, June thirtieth. Okay, gotcha. And this, because we had someone leave.
Yes.
Gotcha. So again, this is a replacement, just finishing out the term. Hopefully, Mr. Livingston may enjoy it so much, he will continue, but I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Lee Livingston to the Cemetery Board for a term starting today through June thirtieth, twenty-two. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Lee Livingston to the Cemetery Board. Any further discussion?
Yes. Is this his first appointment? Did he need to be present or because it's only for a month and a half, we're good, or two and a half?
I don't know if he's been on anything before. The name's very familiar.
Yeah, Lee, well, he serves on the Blizzard Busters. I know that. I know that's not a town.
Right.
But he's a very, his wife's the secretary and he is very involved in that.
Have to say, he's apparently eminently qualified.
Yeah, 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 and I would.
Turn this guy down.
Right, yeah.
Couldn't make the meeting.
Yeah, and I I think, I think, I I do agree. I think i- in this particular instance, it is what, middle of April? So we're talking about a a month and a half, two months that that he's there. So I'd be willing to to waive it with the understanding that if he does want to be reappointed, we would then ask him to come in.
Okay.
Would that be acceptable to everyone?
Yes, it did say here that he was going to appear tonight, so. It did.
Oh, my heavens, I'm sorry. I did not.
And I'm fine with, you know, for two and a half months, it's fantastic that someone's stepping up. I just want to make sure that we cross all our teams.
Everybody good with that? Very well. In that case, if there's no other discussion, all in favor? All right. Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Wherever you may be. We move on to old business. We have one solid hour for this. And we start with item twenty-two, one oh one, which is to consider pending real estate foreclosures. Eric, take it away.
Thanks, Dennis. And so this one is no longer pending. It was pending when it was first brought to the board. I do have a memo included in your packet that goes through some of the background, some of the caveats, as there always are with real estate transactions, and some recommendations. And I will just say that we we did reach out to the former owner as directed by the Select Board to try to help that that former owner maintain their property and reclaim it during the redemption period. They were not able to do so. We did help them understand their options better as far as what what the Select Board had offered with respect to helping them sell their property and retain more value than they might get through a private offer. They did receive a private offer and that had led to some complications. But in the end, the property, the former property owner opted not to redeem and opted to let the town retain ownership of that property following the redemption period. So I have a couple of recommendations and I will read those just to make sure that they come across clearly. And then I will say that it's recommended that the town sell the property at fair market value with the following requests and caveats. I request that Lee Les Priest facilitate the sale of our, as our Realtor, given his knowledge of the unique conditions related to the sale of municipally-owned tax-acquired property. He did sell a property for us less than four years ago and got more than more than market for it, I believe. So it was a very good transaction that he helped out and he is familiar with all the nuances of, you know, title and all those ambiguities. So he's a good one to have on our team, so I'd recommend that. I will also request the town consider applying a conservation easement to a portion or all of the property, given its location and proximity to the Camp Kirkwald Girl Scout Camp and Lovejoy Pond. It's not on the water, but it's near and there may be some conservation value there. I do have a meeting scheduled with the Conservation Commission to take a look at the property tomorrow evening so they can determine if there is any value there. If there is any value there, I would recommend the town try to pursue an easement and offset any loss of the value of that easement of the fair market price to the property owner so that they do retain that full potential value. So basically, if the the fair market price of the property were dropped by roughly five thousand dollars because we had a conservation easement that prohibited building on the back twenty, for example, then that is some of the town would consider offering to supplement that that cost by, you know, using some of our conservation land funds to make the former owner whole. And so that's, that's just another piece of that. However, if there is no conservation value identified for the property, which I spoke with Les and he's skeptical, but but I'll wait for the Conservation Commission. If that's not the case, then we should just sell it at market value and return the proceeds to the to the property owner, a former property owner. And then the last piece here is that while there is no legal requirement, I do recommend that the the town consider offering a right of first refusal to the prospective buyer who was involved during the redemption period with trying to purchase this property. I think it's a good neighbor gesture. I think that he may be willing to to pay market price. And I think that it's always good to do what you can to help people, even if there was some conflict, you know, initially in this with us trying to preserve the the value for the property owner and him potentially trying to get value out of the property. So that's, oh, and and if he doesn't accept that fair market price, then we could just put it right out on the regular market. So those three things are my recommendations and I would appreciate some discussion and a motion if you agree with those.
I I I was, obviously, I was here for the last foreclosure sale, which we turned into some of that property tax relief for for some of our most vulnerable citizens. So not only, I I think Les is the right guy for this, he's done a lot of work, very smart guy in terms of that. I I love the idea of the conservation easement because as we, you know, we talk about things that are happening at the fairgrounds and and doing a sort of offset of some conservation land, I think that's very vital and especially that close to a body of water. And then finally, I I think it's, I think it's acceptable to me to to offer the right of first refusal to the person who first came in. Like you said, if they're, if they want the property, then I hope they'd be willing to pay fair market value and not undercut anyone about it. Ralph?
I think the process, as you've outlined, is eminently fair. I just wonder how we are going to determine fair market value. Who's going to do that without paying for an appraisal so that it has some standing?
Yeah.
If we get caught between a rock and a hard place somewhere down the road.
So two things, we we could pay for an appraisal, but I think that that's not necessarily necessary. We do own the property. We do have the right to establish what we believe is fair market value. Les is very good at what he does, so I would just default to his judgment on what, on what he sees there. He's already looked at the property, just as, you know, to try to get things moving. And he believes that we're we're probably close, but maybe even a little bit high on our assessed value. So I think if that's where he's starting, then I think we're in a good spot.
So he would be looking at comps in the area and making that.
It's hard to find twenty-two acres in the town of Reed Field that has access, but there are some mitigating factors.
And you would have to look at adjoining towns to get.
Yeah, Les will do a good job for us in assessing that value.
Go ahead, Karen.
So in looking at all the information that you gave us in the packet, it says that there's a full bathroom, but that there's a non-existent septic disposal, disposal, so there.
So that means one thing.
So is there really a functioning bathroom?
There is a lovely dory turned on its side with a pit privy underneath it. It's an outhouse. So so there is no, there is no bathroom, there is no plumbing, there's no electricity. It's it's just a cabin with a with a with a pit privy.
Okay, so there's not even electricity at this.
No, it's.
Bring a high dollar value. So I I would not entertain having an appraisal done. This is really just land.
Yeah, and the fact that there's a building there is probably more of a liability than a than an asset at this.
Right, and my understanding was that the the other party that had been interested is a, maybe not contiguous, but a neighboring person in the neighborhood who's interested in the property.
That's correct, absolutely.
So I I like the goodwill effort here being made to to give them right of first right of refusal. I think that's good. I'm happy with everything you've proposed.
So they're not in a butter, so it wouldn't be a simple lot line expansion.
It it would not, but again, there's always, there's always little pieces here with real estate. But he has access through the adjacent parcel. I don't know if it's deeded, but it's 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 some kind of a side agreement anyway.
It's been there for more than seven years.
Well, it it was part of a trade for frontage so they could build a an in-law apartment, but that's a whole other thing.
Anyone else? Eric, do you need a suggestion from the Select Board to take this action?
I would just ask that you approve the direction established in the memo.
I'll make a motion to approve the direction established in the memo in our packet for the property that the town now owns from the foreclosure of map one eighteen, lot sixteen.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to advance the item in our packet regarding the acquired property. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much. We move now to our next item, which is item twenty-two, zero sixty-two. Here an update and consider next steps for the Fairgrounds Community Park and Conservation Project Status. Ten minutes we have allotted for this. We have in-house Hannah Flannery, who is the Chairperson of the Rec Committee.
Who is the chairperson of the REC Committee. And Hannah, if you don't mind, you want to go up there and introduce yourself so folks can hear you, know you, and get to know you.
I'm Hannah Flannery, Reedfield REC Chair. Just wanted to give a couple of updates since the last select board meeting. We held a meeting with the Land of Butters on the thirty-first of March. It was very helpful a lot. Well, a few attended in person, more attended on Zoom, which was great. We heard some general support, and there was definitely some discussion about what the cost of the project is going to be. In that meeting. I think at the past, the last meeting, I talked about how now, as we move towards the. Vote in June, it's an education process to educate everyone in town about what the project entails. Eric did a great update on the town website on Friday, with some information and maps on there. REC has shared the concept plan and more information on our Facebook page. Also put an article in the recent Messenger. With more to come on that. So that's just this beginning, and there's more plans for. Getting a broader span of the project out there for town and community to know all about it. Looking at funding, I did complete the off-line application as much as I could, done to a point where they need a financial analysis, which is the cost. Estimate that we have requested from, I think Eric may give more information on this, but. Are looking to get a better estimate from Maine about the project. Also suggested was to look at a program through the Maine National Guard called an IRT. It's a community mission is how it's described. I talked with someone today. It sounds like that program. Is like a completion of the project once the town has the funding permits and a lot of the details in place. But the gentleman that I spoke to at the Maine National Guard is researching as he's new to the position and put in charge of this program, so. He's going to get a lot more information, so we have a better idea of what that entails and what kind of application and all the parts of that. So. I think that's all I have for now.
Excellent.
Hannah, can I ask a quick question? Can we get a mock-up, like just a picture of the proposed fairground to put on that sign at the fairground? And when you're standing there and trying to envision it. Just for like public information, there's that bulletin board there. I wonder if. But there is that board there that has like, I don't know, wildlife information. If we could have like a mock-up, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think the more that we can let people know what's happening and how how we've gone about it and all of the stakeholders been included, I think that's great. Anyone else? Go ahead, Eric.
I just want to add a couple of things about scheduling, because Hannah's been working on this, and I really appreciate the work you've done, Hannah. It's been excellent taking some of these things and running with them. I think that we've got a really good team, and everybody's, you know, we're not all in agreement all the time, but. Appreciate the working group that we have, the information that we've received from them, and just the effort to move this forward. So the voters can make a decision. But I wanted to point out that we, I did update that page on the website, so it's under the. The Recreation tab, and there's a ton of information there. We're going to be updating that page regularly. And one of the things that I had done was to do a worst-case scenario cost estimate. And I was surprised, when you bond a project like this for twenty years. Which is a common thing to do for a project of this size, the the cost for an average homeowner is about twenty dollars a year. So for twenty dollars a year, the average homeowner in Reedfield could help pay for a community park. That really expands our recreational opportunities and. Make a permanent investment in the community. That would only be for the first twenty years. After that, the bond will be paid off, and then we could look at other projects. But I just wanted to make that point because I hadn't done that that fine-tuned analysis up until recently. And that's with, you know, borrowing four hundred thousand dollars. That's if we get no grants. That's if we get no community donations. That's if we get no help from the National Guard or other people with heavy equipment. So. I very much expect that 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 dollar value will just continue to drop as this project goes forward. And as the cost will go down, the value, I think, is much more evident because it's a wonderful asset that we're looking at. And the cost really isn't, isn't that significant. You know, I'll say that. We are moving forward with a second working group meeting this coming. Not this coming Tuesday, not this Tuesday, but the one following, to review a second draft of the concept plan that will be available on Friday. So what that will do is, we've heard all of this input from the Conservation Commission Trails. Historical Society, Recreation, and the Butters. And so we pulled all that together, sent it off to the consultant. She's working on a revised plan that'll be out Friday. We'll then meet again with the working group. Finalize that concept plan, I hope, and then move that on to the engineer to start building out. And that's where we are able to get what's considered a seventies percent completed plan. That's, we're going to discuss that later tonight, but. That allows us to have a reliable cost estimate and to show, you know, the public and the voters. Very much what's going to be existing on the ground, so we can know what the wetland impacts are. We know what the cost is going to be. And that'll give us all that final information we need. So within a couple of weeks, we should be in a very good spot to move this forward with full information. And then we'll just have to continue working on the fundraising and see where things land.
Excellent. Go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, so this is Sean. I I want to say thanks to everybody that's working on this, because it's. It's been a labor of love, I would say, and a lot of different steps. And, you know, I I heard some of this feedback from the Butters meeting and and from other committees, and I want to thank them for just. You know, we're all working. We all have some sort of skin in this game and what we're doing. And I tell you, I love the name of this project now. You know, the Fairgrounds Community Park and Conservation Project, because it has, and we really need to take into consideration. What the end goal of what we want there and what everybody's working to and how these compromises come together. One thing I want to say, and it's something Bruce Hunter mentioned at the Butters meeting, and I think he's right, is that we really need to talk about. What the future of that area looks like now, if this is successful. And so maybe. Is there a community park conservation project? Plan, you know, is there a document, a guiding document, just like the current Fairgrounds document, but something more updated to the changes that have been in place? To the work that's been done between Conservation and REC. So. I'd really like us to to look at that, probably not this year as a select board, but for next year, working with. Those boards and committees to come up with a new plan to make sure, you know, we're. We're thinking about the dual impact there in what we're doing.
I think that's good. I think it's dual, just stewardship.
Yes.
Go ahead, Carol.
I really like the synopsis you put together, Eric. The twenty dollars per property homeowner is. A very good way to look at it. Doesn't sound so huge and foreboding. The layout, is that pretty much the way it's going to be?
It's not. And actually, I did include what we, we updated the name of the project anyway, because it said ball field, and that's not right. But so what we'll be getting this Friday is going to be the revised site plan that will include adjustments. And particularly, the location of that basketball court needs to be adjusted. Also, some changes to where the kiosk is. And we'll be looking at showing the the well that's going to be on site, showing the utility access, showing. The the pollinated gardens specifically on the plan. So that updated plan will be coming in this Friday.
Great.
So do you know where the ball field, the other alternative was going to be?
Alternative.
The basketball.
I I believe it's either going to be, and I haven't seen the final plan yet. Either closer to Church Road to kind of help take advantage of that angle that exists along that wetland. Or perhaps hopscotch over the area, have a small bridge or a small footpath, which they actually had already envisioned. And have it closer to the cemetery. So those are the two options. Really, it would be moving it. And they might may reorient it, but it might be a hundred feet. If it goes back, if it goes to the, towards the 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 road, it might go twenty, thirty feet closer to the road. But that's, that's just speculation based on the two potential places that have been discussed for it.
Can I ask the the initial placement of it way off to the side, to the side of the parking spot? Do I recall that it was because they didn't want it visible from the road or something?
Yeah, so the reasons, there were two reasons, two primary reasons. One was that there's a neighbor right there.
Neighbor.
A neighbor, yes. And so if there was ever, ever in the future, not planned right now, but ever. The activity there would be an issue, but if there was ever lighting, that might be an issue. But also, more importantly, I believe it was, it was the view shed and the desire to not chew up any more of that grassland. So Conservation was very adamant that if it goes someplace, it should go in a wooded area and not in the field. So multiple reasons, view shed, preservation of that grassland habitat, and the neighbor. Is that?
And the what?
Hi Hannah, thank you. Thank you, say your name.
So if the court was by the neighbor, it also would not, the trail said if it displaced any trail, we had to do was replace. Where they were, but setting the court on that other side also moved the memorial bench to the tree. All the parts of the trail that are on the opposite side.
You're talking about if it's on the right of the parking?
Where you're talking.
Yes, that's the idea.
Yeah, one other issue that.
But, okay.
There is also some issues with, I won't say trespassing, but people cut that corner across the Butters land. And if that ball court was right there, I think that might be exacerbated.
I'm not talking about it being. I'm talking about straight on. So. It's a park for activity. As a, as a mom, my mom radar's going off. If I'm at the ball court. With one child and another child's playing basketball, I'm going to want to like. Figure, you know, be able to see them. That is way far away. So if you have like a family doing multiple things, it's quite far away from the activity to have kids by a road. There's also culvert going to that corner, and it is very wet. So I can see the concern about the water.
Yeah.
And I was talking to somebody about the project, and they're like. Like a garden and the play area. It's like those two go together. It's like they're, they're. It's going to be hard to be symbiotic with kids running and bikes going and balls going and butterflies feeling safe at at home. I'm just putting it out there. There's a lot of property in that whole acreage. We have a lot of property, the. Twenty thousand dollars a year, we're buying property that we think is for conservation. I don't know. I just don't see that being a happy marriage between those two in such a tight. Vicinity, when there's going to be activity there that I don't think it's going to be a nice quiet home for butterflies.
Well, I think that's why they have the paths going through, so the traffic will be directed.
It's not a big area for all to, I don't know. Anyway, those, that's just my input. That's my input.
What's that now? Sure, go right up there. Yeah, absolutely.
In the past week, I've, two weeks, I've gone to many homes, probably about a hundred. And talked to people. What Carol's saying is a very, very important statement I've heard. From almost every single person, and I just wanted to say that there's some concern. And I think her words should be, should be her thistle.
Excellent. Thank you, Robert. Very well. Is there any more discussion on the plan, the update, anything like that? We can move on. We are just a little over time. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. We move on to our next item, which is item twenty-two, excuse me, twenty-one zero six eight. It's to hear an update and consider the next steps for broadband. Ten minutes for this, Catherine?
No, we'll go to Eric.
Go to Eric first.
Okay, so we are continuing to work on this item. The phase that we're at right now is essentially contract. Negotiation with a prospective service provider. We did Select Axiom last month. And we've been working with them to try to get a couple of potential draft contracts together. So that we can have a baseline for the services going to be provided and all those important terms and conditions that would go along with it. So we can have that available for for voters, much the same way we're having a lot of good information available for. For voters for the ball field, for the Fairgrounds project on the town of Reedfield website and other valid resources. So. We, we have a meeting scheduled for for next Tuesday. Is that right, Catherine? For next, for next week, anyway, to, maybe it is Monday, to move forward with that discussion. And we were really seeing a lot of momentum with the other towns in the area. Who have chosen to work with with Axiom as we have. So we now have committed the town of Vienna. Wayne, Leeds, and Reedfield, and Mount Vernon is very likely headed that direction. So. We would be looking at a contiguous fiber to the home network if approved in those towns. Of something like five or six towns, which would be a big value for the residents as well as. Help with efficiency when it comes to maintaining and operating that network. So I just wanted to give an update about the regional effort. The fact that we're in contract negotiations and that we expect to have. A draft, a draft contract that we can work with within the month.
Great.
Catherine, anything else? Oh, and Catherine's working on some wonderful promotional materials that I almost forgot about, so I won't.
Well, I think I already did my part of the work, and we have a consultant who's putting it all together in a really great format. And that should be live within two weeks, I would say.
Nice.
So we'll be able to get all the information out there so people can make their mind up on what they think of the project. And we're hoping to work with her also on the Fairgrounds project so that we. Can get the same kind of flavor out there in both printed and website materials. Being as transparent as possible.
And since we are able to have a little extra time, I want to take the opportunity to state and to follow up on what you were saying, Catherine. We, not only as a select board to take goals each year, but as servants to the public. I think it is critically important that we do things like educate. Edify, in-inform as much as we possibly can about these issues, these projects. And things like that. The scope is simply too big to do anything else. So I hope that if you are listening to this, you want to find out more information about either of these items, broadband. The Fairgrounds Community Park and Conservation Project. You can find that on our website for the Fairgrounds Project. The upcoming broadband information will also be coming out, but please, don't hesitate. Go to the website, reedfieldmaine.org, and find out, make sure you're informed and really know the truth. Because I think that's important. Anything else? Excellent. We move on to our next item. This is item twenty-two, one ten. Consider a final draft for the town meeting warrant. We have thirty minutes set aside for this. And if it pleases the board, what I'm going to do and what I'm following past practice. Is to go through each one of these or to go through these, and they're grouped. Together, and what I will do is I will ask if there's any single item that the select board would like to pay attention to. Just let me know. Otherwise, what we will do is I will sort of go through these and explain what each one is, what it does. And how it affects us. Any questions about that? Very well. If you look in your packet, you can see the information for the warrant. Articles one through six, one through six are administrative articles. Article two is subjective, subject to the return of nomination papers. As that includes the select board members, as well as the RSU thirty-eight members, school committee, local school committee. One, two, and three-year terms. Any questions about articles? Um, any questions about articles one through six? I will note, uh, that the names that appear in article two are, uh, by legal submission. Uh, so the ones that are legally, uh, able to be there. I don't know when the cutoff is.
So i- it's actually the fifteenth. So there may be a couple of those that don't show up, but if the board just votes to accept that block, uh, with the caveat that, um, any, um, uh, names without proper, properly submitted nomination papers would be removed, that would be sufficient.
Gotcha. Um, articles one through six, go ahead.
Eric, on article four, shouldn't it be February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three?
Let me look here. Article four, September twenty-two, yes, it should. I'll correct that.
Very nice. Any others? Corrections, one through six. Take a look. Make sure everything pays attention. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve articles one through six as amended.
In article four?
As, as, let me start that over.
Please do.
Motion to approve articles one through six. On article two, any names that don't have papers submitted will be withdrawn from the ballot and article four, the date will be changed from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-three.
Perfect. Second, it's been moved and seconded to accept, uh, warrant articles, uh, one through six as, uh, Catherine mentioned. Is there any further discussion? Very well, all in favor. Thank you very much. We then move on to articles seven through nine. These are department budget articles. You can see, uh, article seven is inclusive, article eight, uh, what looks like maintenance, uh, and article nine, uh, is for community services. Um, is there any discussion or questions about articles seven through nine? Very well.
I'll make a motion to, um,
Um, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I have to ask. Um, animal control. I think the stipend for the person there is three thousand and the rest of that is, I know there's a cell phone and.
There's also the Kennebec Valley Humane Society, so that's a larger, very large portion of that.
Okay.
Um,
So we paid for like?
We pay for access to the shelter to help keep it up. And I, and I will say that it's, it's a value because they get a lot of donations. Um, so they actually don't charge us as much as we probably actually use in services, so.
Thank you.
Unless you wanna build your own dog.
Let's not even, let's not even talk about that.
They're building a new one for that.
They are.
It's a great, great.
I'll make a motion that we approve articles seven, eight and nine with a select board recommendation of, is it ought to pass?
Uh, yes, yes.
Pass.
Yeah. Well, it, it's yes.
It's yeah.
Yeah, so yes, no.
It's just, yes, no.
Yes. Second, all right, it's been moved and seconded to approve articles seven through nine. Any further discussion on these? Yes, Ralph?
No, no, I'm just.
Oh. All in favor. There we go. I like it. Um, art, yeah. Article ten is for broadband. Uh, it is the vote to authorize the select board to enter in the two-year construction contract. Um, and you can see it there. It's a twenty-year municipal bond, um, forty-eight, sixty-four, two-thirty, which was down from our original one. Any questions about article ten relating to broadband?
No, I'll just note that the change that was made here is there's no, there are no adjectives. It's just high-speed broadband internet.
Great.
Yeah, and.
That was legal counsel advice.
Hmm, yeah, I was just gonna say that this, this received a lot of review from both our bond counsel and our regular legal counsel. Uh, and this whole document has been reviewed by, by legal counsel for, um, I guess everything except for dates in February, so.
Yeah, that's right. Yes. Thank you. Um, I would entertain a motion to accept this article.
So moved with a select word recommendation of yes.
It's been.
And Sean, if we, if you and I do this, it makes it really easy for her in typing all of these?
Yes, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve article ten, uh, on the, uh, June warrant. All in favor? Very well. Article eleven is for, uh, it's a departmental budget article. It's a simple yes or no. You can see, uh, fifty-eight, seven-oh-seven for recreation parks and activities. Uh, you can, uh, find out the cost breakdown as we go through. Um, if there are any discussion on this, do so now, or I will entertain a motion to accept it.
We'll make a motion to approve article eleven with a select word recommendation of yes.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to accept article eleven. Any further discussion? All in favor. Thank you very much. Articles twelve and thirteen are for the fairgrounds. This requires a yes or no recommendation from the select board. Uh, vote to allow revised concept plan to be included as an attachment, um, is also a part of this. Again, we are looking at articles twelve and thirteen. Um, is there any discussion questions about these articles?
I'll make a motion to approve articles twelve and thirteen with a select word recommendation of ought to pass of yes, sorry.
Yep.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve articles twelve and thirteen. Any discussion? All in favor. Thank you very much. Articles fourteen are departmental budget, or, uh, excuse me, fourteen through twenty-one are a departmental budget articles which require a simple yes or no recommendation from the select board. Um, I'm gonna go through these just to highlight so that we know, but, uh, to give you an idea. Uh, article fourteen, protection department, article.
Oh, sorry, I just, um, I wanted to clarify, did article twelve include, did that vote include, um, the authorization to, uh, include an amended, uh, concept plan?
Yes, that was, that was included in my, and it was so moved.
Okay, awesome. Just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Um, so that's not written in there, correct?
No, it was a special thing for us.
Uh, it, well, it is, it isn't, so, so I guess what I'll say is that in the draft that you're looking at, there is a concept plan included, but, um, we have a revised one that includes right now the proper name that was added to the packet, uh, but also, uh, come Friday, we'll have a, a new one that will be, um, more accurate.
Right. So basically, we just approved this, uh, with the revised plan, nice and general, and then they'll add that on Friday. Excellent. Thank you. Now we're back to fourteen through twenty-one. Uh, fourteen, we mentioned protection. Article fifteen is for cemetery. Article sixteen is for roads and drainage, seventeen for capital improvements, eighteen solid waste, nineteen regional assessments, twenty Kennebec County tax, and twenty-one is for debt service. If there's no, uh, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve articles fourteen through twenty-one with a select word recommendation of yes.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve articles fourteen through twenty-one. Any further discussion? All in favor. Thank you very much. Article twenty-two is a vote about tax relief. Um, this is a simple, uh, article that requires a yes or no vote from the select board. Uh, if there's no discussion, I would entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve article twenty-two with a select word recommendation, yes.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to accept article twenty-two for local tax relief. Any discussion? All in favor. Thank you very much. We move now to articles twenty-three through thirty. You'll notice these are third-party allocation articles. These are, uh, monies that Reedfield pays to nonprofits, et cetera. Again, this is a yes or no vote. Um, and just for the sake of going through them, I will briefly mention each one. Article twenty-three, Kennebec Behavioral Health. Article twenty-four, Central Maine Agency on Aging, Cohen Center and Senior Spectrum. Um, article twenty-five, Family Violence Agency. Article twenty-six, the Miranda Cook Lake Association and Torsey Pond Association. Twenty-seven for sexual assault and, uh, sexual assault agency. Twenty, uh, twenty-eight is for the Thirty Mile River Association. Twenty-nine is for the Reedfield Union Meeting House and thirty is for the Reedfield Blizzard Busters Snowmobile Club. Are there any questions or shall I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve articles twenty-three through thirty with a select word recommendation, yes.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve articles twenty-three through thirty. Any discussion? All in favor. Thank you very much. Articles thirty-one and thirty-two are departmental budget articles. You can see thirty-one requires, uh, unclassified budget and thirty-two is for general assistance budget. Uh, if there are no questions about that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve articles thirty-one and thirty-two. Is that right?
That is correct.
With a select word recommendation, yes.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve articles thirty-one and thirty-two. Any discussion? All in favor. Thank you very much. Um, next up, we have articles thirty-three through thirty-seven, uh, which are departmental budget articles once again. Uh, thirty-three, uh, expenditure of revenues. Uh, article thirty-four is estimated revenues. You can see the long list there. Uh, thirty-five, uh, is for designated funds, thirty-six unassigned fund and thirty-seven unassigned fund balance to reduce the total tax commitment. That's thirty-three through thirty-seven. Any further discussion or shall I entertain a motion?
Eric, um, on article thirty-four, I'm being nitpicky, but on the total, can we take out the period after the zero? Take out the space after the zero before the comma?
Oh, man, yeah.
Yeah, that was picky, but I think it's a good idea.
Well, there we go.
And Greg Durgan, I know you're listening, so this one's for you.
Well, make sure you accept it as amended.
Oh, that's a good question, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve articles thirty-three through thirty-seven.
That is correct.
Um, with the amendment to article thirty-four, all with a select word recommendation, yes.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve articles thirty-three through thirty-seven, noting the space elimination in article thirty-four. Is there any further discussion? All in favor. Thank you.
Sounds like there were aliens there.
Uh, space elimination. Uh, article thirty-eight is something we discussed this evening. It's about LED lights. It's a simple yes or no vote from, uh, the select board. Um, shall the town authorize installation of up to five new LED streetlights and authorize any associated multi-year contracts? This is just simply adding capacity, uh, as we need it. Um, and that's what this article is for. Is there any question or, oh, go ahead, Eric?
Just wanted to note that although there is no dollar value associated with that one specifically, it does show up under community services, um, and in an earlier expenditure line. So the, the money that, this is more of an authorization for the long-term contracts and for the installation, because we have an obligation to, um, give the voters a crack at anything more than three years. And this would be forever.
Yes, understood.
We don't need to vote on these then?
Uh, article thirty-seven, um,
We just did that.
Thirty-eight, no, you don't, because you've already voted on the dollar value.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. And any discussion questions? I'd entertain a motion. Oh, go ahead, Ralph.
I, I know maybe we don't necessarily need to vote on it because there's a dollar value tucked in another budget line. But does that dollar value that's tucked in there specify this project? And if it doesn't, we should specify this project, correct?
Yep.
Well, it's under streetlights, which only costs, oh, what, what, six hundred dollars a year now and I think we put in five thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
But let's find.
We wouldn't necessarily get to that level of detail in the warrant. Um, it would be inconsistent.
Okay. Thank you. I, I assume all the lawyers know what they're talking about. Uh, is there anything else? All right. I'd entertain a motion to accept thirty-eight.
I'll make a motion to accept article thirty-eight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve article thirty-eight. Any further discussion? All in favor. Thank you. Next up is article thirty-nine. Shall an ordinance entitled twenty-twenty-two amendments to the town of Reedfield Land Use Ordinance be enacted? Uh, article thirty-nine is, uh, what we are voting on. If there's any discussion? Very well, I'd entertain a motion.
I, I think I see a question maybe from somebody. So we're not saying that we agree with these or we don't agree with these. What we're saying is that the planning board in the town have done their due diligence in preparing these revisions. They've held their budget. I mean, they've held their public hearings and we're allowing it to be placed on the warrant.
Hmm, okay, excellent.
So I make a motion to approve article thirty-nine.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve article thirty-nine for the warrant. Any further discussion? All in favor. Thank you very much. Uh, our last, uh, article forty is shall an ordinance, uh, entitled twenty-twenty-two amendments to the town of Reedfield Board of Appeals ordinance, uh, be enacted. Article forty, um, is our last article. If there's no discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve article forty to be placed on the ballot.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve article forty for the ballot. Any further discussion? All in favor. Thank you very much.
We did that in seventeen minutes.
Woo, that's amazing, because all of the work that had happened.
We've read it a couple.
I'd just like to thank the budget committee, the planning board, all the boards and committees, their chairs, their members, this board, especially Teresa, our finance officer, Eric, the town manager, and all of the office support staff for doing a fantastic job and putting the budget together, and all the presentations. Uh, it's, it, it's a really streamlined process and it, I think it was very easy for us to go through. Um, and I know there was a lot of work also put into explaining things for our new members and I really appreciate all the work.
I, I, I trust the folks on the budget committee. I think they're very smart, they're responsible, they wanna see what's best for Reedfield and they work their tails off. Eric?
All right. So speaking of the budget committee, they, uh, will be reviewing and making their recommendations, uh, this Thursday evening. So that'll wrap up that process, assuming everything goes as planned. Uh, and I just wanna, um, point out that, um, uh, with now knowing the school budget, they're looking at a, an eight percent increase, um, uh, this year, just about, a little bit less than that, seven-point-eight. Uh, much better than the thirteen, uh, that they were presenting, um, but still significant. But keep in mind, uh, we had two years, both the town and the school, of reductions in what we were assessing residents out of pocket in order to give some room during the COVID pandemic. So, um, you know, the school has an increase this year, the town has an increase this year. Together, the budget that, that you folks just, you know, in, uh, effectively voted to move forward. If all articles are approved, the average impact for, for a, a, a home in Reedfield, for, you know, average home, uh, would be about fifty dollars more per year than it was in two thousand nineteen, before we dropped off for two years of COVID relief. And so now we've gone back up again and up just a little bit. So, um, to me, that's a fairly reasonable position. Uh, obviously, we're looking at some more expenses next year, but, um, if the broadband project is approved, um, that can be relieved by lower utility costs for, uh, for, for internet services. So, uh, I think that we're, uh, headed in the right direction in that, that what, um, the budget committee and the select board has done, uh, has been very reasonable and, and moderate. And, um, there really is a, a fairly minimal tax impact, uh, relative to what things were before, before we, um, artificially lowered, uh, rates over the last two years. So that's just my summary on the process.
Thank you very much. Carol, go for it.
Question, does that mean that teacher negotiations are all over?
Uh, no, they're ongoing. Um, and, uh, and that's gonna be, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have an impact from that. There's no question. Um, uh, some of it's being addressed this year, some of it, and I, from my understanding, a majority of it will be addressed next year. So we're gonna have to, um, think about that moving forward.
Eric, you mentioned if it's on the average, that's the like two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar assessed value property.
Yep.
Um, it's fifty dollars approximately more than in twenty-nineteen. Do we know what it is compared to this year?
Uh, compared to this year, it's probably up about a hundred and twenty.
Okay. Thank you.
Very well. Uh, we move now to our new business. Item twenty-two, one-nineteen is to discuss the upcoming Heritage Days celebration in August. Dennis, do you wanna take this? Thank you, Dennis. Um, one of the things that I,
Dennis.
Um, uh, would like to say is this, um, Heritage Days is happening this year and it will be August twelfth and thirteen. It is always, um, the second weekend in August. So it's the twelfth and thirteenth. The idea this year is that we are looking for folks that are interested in Reedfield throughout town, uh, to give us an opportunity, uh, to join us and be a part of the planning, the helping and the maneuvering, uh, that is involved in our, uh, Heritage Day celebration. Last year, we had a great morning of activities, which included live huge animals pulling heavy things, uh, and then it rained. Uh, but it didn't, it only dampened the ground, but not our spirits. Uh, money was raised, uh, for families in need. We gave out the Spirit of America awards, et cetera, et cetera. So the idea behind, uh, Heritage Days this year is a celebration of Reedfield, uh, and I can't wait to, to get started. I'd like to tell everyone, if you're listening, that we will have volunteer information available. We will have, uh, vendor information and maker information available as well. In addition to the town of Reedfield, uh, Facebook page, which we will be also updating, Reedfield Heritage Days has its own Facebook page. You can find that on Facebook, Reedfield Heritage Days, uh, on Facebook. So, uh, that's what I wanted to say. If anyone else of the select board wants to talk about Heritage Days, Sean?
Yeah, I'll mention Heritage Days and.
Yeah, I'll mention Heritage Days and 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 kind of help you with your plug for aid and volunteers.
Yep. We appreciate that.
Yeah, I think I started working with yourself and Chris Salmons on Heritage Days Reed Field Festival Days.
Yes.
In twenty sixteen, maybe. And I I I, for me, what was great about being a volunteer that I came through from rec to help with that day was learning about all the other people in town. You know, meeting, meeting the folks at the Masonic Hall and and just all the different and how they all come together and just, you know, learning more about the community itself. So I really hope um, if you're slightly interested in helping have such a fun day, you know, it's a great weekend. Uh, I I really always look forward to it. So does my family. So if you have time, it's not a lot of time, but.
I would also say if you don't want to help, if you just want to enjoy, please do so as well. Uh, we plan to have more food trucks available this year. We're gonna have some items. Uh, some parking down by the beach this time. Uh, we're always trying to learn, always trying to take feedback and uh, have have more activities. It's fun for the whole family, uh, and we're gonna market it as much as we can. Catherine?
I'm good.
Oh, you, okay, I thought you said something. Say, go for it, Carol.
Quick question.
Yes.
Every year I miss a lot of it because we have a family uh, gathering on that same day every single year. But when you talk about vendors, is that open to local businesses? I don't know how vast.
Absolutely. So what we did, we had a ton of local businesses last year. Uh, what we, what we managed to do is we have basically like a makers market. Um, so last year, for example, we had metal smiths, we had painters, we had uh, knitters, we had all sorts of really interesting uh, you know, local businesses that were involved. And and I'll tell you, not just in Reed Field, but also uh, from Monmouth, uh, from surrounding towns. So we really do put a premium on that.
What does that park take place?
Well, that last year, the makers mark was at the 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 beach down where people normally park. We had ten booths, eleven booths of folks. We're thinking about keeping that down there, uh, but we're gonna add parking to the grass area ups up on the second level where the band was. Um, because people want to park closer and we should be able to give them that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, that's all I had to say. Anything else? All right, then let's move on, friends. Item twenty two, one twenty is to consider the approval of welding and concrete repair work at the transfer station. I can only assume Eric will explain this to us.
Yeah, so those uh, projects that I had identified um, uh, earlier in my town manager's report. Uh, the um, the process that we have for um, expenditures uh, dictates that generally speaking, anything over five thousand dollars should receive um, uh, multiple quotes. Um, and then anything over ten thousand dollars would be a full RFP process. Um, this uh, project is kind of uh, in in between those two areas. However, uh, we um, uh, we we have worked with Mark Newcomb for uh, basically all of our welding at the transfer station. So uh, this would be something that um, I would ask the select board to to waive their purchasing policy for, so we could continue to work with Mark Newcomb uh, to do that welding work um, at a cost of around seven thousand dollars. Uh, and then uh, to add, excuse me, closer to, well, seventy four hundred. Uh, and then also uh, authorize uh, the curb repair that's necessary for the installation of those railings and gates uh, for an additional um, uh, what do we have here? PSI two thousand eight hundred ninety. Uh, so uh, basically looking for approval to move forward with this project and um, the the funds would be coming out of the operating budget. Uh, other work uh, will be coming out of um, out of capital, but uh, these ones will be looking to uh, pull out of, out of the operating budget.
Good. So just to be clear, we are suspending uh, the the purchasing policy because of the history of this vendor uh, and the familiarity with the work and we need to and and the expeditious nature of this work.
Yes, uh, because part of what we're trying to address is safety concerns around the forty-two inch height for railings.
Right. I was, that was my question. So there is, so our railings are at a standard height based on a law or OSHA or?
OSHA, yep. Um, so backed up by law.
Yeah. So how how can we support that for maybe some vertically challenged members of the public and lifting over said railing?
So we we can open the gates uh, for folks or uh, in some cases, staff will assist. If there's a light bag of trash, tossing it over for older residents. Uh, but if somebody comes in and they have um, have difficulty. Um, uh, typically, we do allow uh, the the gates to be open with an attendant present to make sure that there's, you know, no, no hazards and things like that.
That's current practice.
I would just question how someone would know that's current practice.
Um, you wouldn't by signage, but um, with Karen at least being at the site over the last year or more. Um, she's pretty good about seeing someone coming with something that looks a little bit too heavy or too bulky. And um, will ask, would you like me to open the gate? And then she stands right there with you, blocking the way so that you are not going to fall in.
I appreciate that.
But do you think that's something that we should mention?
I witnessed it recently and was surprised and I just thought, wow, that's, if I had I went up after the person with the heavier bat, you know, I was like, oh, imagine if that person was this heavy. Could they have done what I just did? And it just thought my wa- my wife might not be that tall at all. So I was just thinking if she was the one going, how that would have worked out.
So maybe I should put that in the messenger.
Yeah, I think it's 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 worth.
It's just a courteous thing. I think I know Karen is fantastic at all. So it's just, yeah.
What if we just put a simple sign of if you need assistance, please ask attendant or something by?
I'd be surprised if it. If people wouldn't.
Already there, yeah.
I don't think there is one.
No sign there yet.
No, I mean, it says see attendant before, it says see attendant before dropping anything off, but it doesn't say much about. So we can add uh, a sign about um, for assistance.
Yeah.
Especially now that it'll be in front of everything.
In front of everything.
Yeah, yeah. But um, I'd rather have that there than the this flimsy piece of rope we have that.
I broke, I broke all of those myself at some point. And we don't want your wife mahopper.
I don't want her to, that would be good.
Or anybody's wife or parents.
Item before we go on in that, I, we don't have to do it tonight, but I'm just wondering with the um, inflationary nature of the world and how long it's been, which I think is five years-ish since we have updated our purchasing policy. It may be now it's time to change from five thousand dollars to seventy-five hundred or to ten thousand.
What are we talking about?
So we have a purchasing policy that says um, about getting bids and quotes um, from people. So right now, it says that if something is under five thousand dollars, we can take it preferred vendor who comes in under that amount. If it's over five thousand but under ten, then we.
We get uh, three quotes.
We need to get three quotes. Oftentimes, we have found that we can't get three quotes because there aren't three vendors.
Right.
Either who exist in the the case of, say, the woodchipping at the uh, transfer station. There's only one vendor does it anymore. Um, it's so that we get three. And then if it's over ten thousand, we need bids. And so what I'm saying is it's been at least five years since we've set those dollar amounts. And with the way that things are going, and I think this is maybe the third time we've suspended our purchasing policy this year, maybe we need to up those limits.
You're talking about just at the transfer station?
No.
Everything.
Our general town policy.
The idea being we won't have to suspend the policy, which uh, just inherently I feel weird about because we made a policy for suspended. So what we would do is we would, we would then raise the limit to which we must suspend the policy with the idea that then hopefully we wouldn't have to suspend it. And I think, I think twenty-five hundred dollars, seventy-five hundred, uh, probably a good leeway in there because I think anything over ten, you definitely should. Uh, but five seems a little too low. If we could strike that happy medium, I'd be into that, but that's a conversation for another time.
Yes.
So if we.
This was a good time to bring.
Well, that's absolutely right.
I know that.
That will be.
Letting us see.
Yeah, and and we, as an ongoing select board goal, we know that we're always revising some of our, you know, ordinances and things like that. So um.
I'll make a motion to approve the two vendors and their estimates as presented in the packet.
For?
Uh, for welding and concrete work at the transfer station.
Thank you, boys.
Second.
It's been moved in second uh, to approve the welding and concrete repair work at the transfer station as it appears in the packet. Uh, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Uh, our next item is item twenty two, one twenty-one. We have all uh, five minutes for this. What we want to do is schedule our next few uh, select board meetings. Um, in my magic uh, calendar, I can tell you that our next meeting um, will be May twenty-fifth.
We don't have another one.
April twenty.
April twenty, April twenty fifth. Sorry, sorry about that. Sorry about it. Uh, uh, April twenty-fifth is our next one. And then, once we do that, we go to a one, two, three-weeker. So then after April twenty-fifth, our next scheduled meeting is Monday, May sixteenth.
And when is the candidate's night?
Candidate's night is Monday, May ninth.
And do we have a facilitator for that yet?
We do, in fact, yeah.
Doug Stevenson, he's uh, facilitated a couple of those for us in the past.
He's a pro. And what time is that, Eric? Six thirty?
Six thirty PM.
Like every other.
Six thirty to eight thirty. We'll start with select board candidates, then we'll move on to uh, RSU.
Excellent. And that will be zoomed via Zoom.
Yeah, there were no times in any of these. So are these all proposed six thirty?
Uh, yes.
Yes, so it's in the memo, it states that they're all scheduled for six thirty.
Yep, no worries. Um, so just to recap, because that's how I am, our next meeting is April twenty-fifth. After that, the next uh, engagement is May ninth for the candidate's night. The next select board meeting after that is May sixteenth, which is a Monday. Um, and I believe it would be uh, appropriate for us, that would be the twenty, excuse me, the sixteenth um, would be the last meeting be before our public hearing, um, which is scheduled for June second. The public hearing of the warrant and the articles, et cetera, et cetera. Then on that following, uh, then two weeks from there, we would have a select board meeting on June thirteenth, which would be our final meeting before Election Day on June fourteenth.
And is the second a Thursday?
The second is a Thursday and that public hearing also happens at six thirty PM.
That's a silly question. Why do we call it a town meeting and not just a vote?
It's a great question.
It, I'm always like, it just seems.
It's because, it's the old throwback to when everyone got together and had their town meeting. It's really, it's semantical in my.
It's a town meeting adjourned to a referendum.
Yeah.
Can we just someday call it a town vote?
You can call it whatever you want.
But I don't, I don't, like newbies to this town, I was just like, when's the vote? And it just kept being called a town meeting and it was very odd.
Uh, yeah.
Um, I I I think there's no legal reason to continue to call it that. It's um, it's something we can look into. Um, but but basically, we still have town meeting. We just have a secret ballot form of voting. It's awkward. Um, but so I think you're right. We should look at that. And um, in the past, I've had town meeting slash secret ballot vote. But I think a secret ballot vote is probably um, more appropriate. Yeah, you know.
As long as the scope of the secret ballot vote is defined.
Yeah.
It has to be a town. It it has to say something about town, government.
Right, yeah.
So it's still.
Otherwise, it could be a single issue.
And I think the warrant is the town meeting warrant. It's the warrant for the town meeting. We just have a.
Town meeting warrant vote.
Yeah. I'll look into it.
Semantics. Everyone, we're gonna go away thinking of the greatest name.
If we can take the word meeting out of there, because it's not.
Yeah.
It's not a gathering. You're all separated in your own little cubicle.
I bet legal counsel will have a good, um.
If you want to spend money to go into the weeds that.
I'll ask Mamie Municipal. They'll know. Mamie Municipal Legal can answer this for us for free. So.
All right. Now, thank you very much. Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Go for it, Karen. Catherine, Karen?
Yes, Catherine.
Yeah, Catherine. I'm surrounded by.
In the FYI, it did show us the latest on the school board and um, Eric, do you want to mention the SP award?
Um, sure. I actually have one other item that I forgot to mention during the fairgrounds discussion, but um, so um, Jerry Bly uh, received a uh, very prestigious award in his field um, for his land conservation work that he's done for the town um, and other towns. I mean, he, this is his profession. Uh, it's his passion and he's being recognized for it. So I would like to perhaps have the select board, um, maybe at a future meeting uh, formally recognize uh, that accomplishment because it is uh, one of those things that uh, it's it's won a year statewide, uh, and um, and this year it was Jerry. So.
Yeah, I think that's great. And Jerry's been great on the um, uh, committee. He's knowledgeable. He loves Reed Field and I'm glad that he is in our town. But that's a great idea. Thank you. What else?
Um, so during the fairgrounds, um, uh, actually, you guys probably wrap up this business here with the uh, select board meetings for the twenty-seventh and uh, of June and then July.
Yep, okay. Uh, so June thirteenth, we are in June once again. June thirteenth is the select board meeting. Election Day is the fourteenth. And just to go back, I hate to go backwards, but I'm gonna do it. June second is the public hearing. Um, then we have uh, our next select board meeting for July, uh, June twenty-seventh after the election. Um, then we don't go the, for for you guys, we start to go once a month in the summer. So our July meeting is scheduled for July eighteenth. And that's as far as we got into July. We didn't do an August one yet. Um, but if we follow uh, the sort of third Monday, it would be August fifteenth. Does that work for everybody?
Nope.
Okay. August fifteenth.
We did so well, Dennis.
I know, we try.
I will be on a beach in the Dominican on August fifteenth.
Oh, that's right, because you're still gone. Um, well, we could do.
Probably ought to wait till you see who your new board is.
To do the August.
Oh, yeah, good call. Okay.
How that.
So then let's just wait for August. Does that sound good?
I'm good with all the other days.
All right, great. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Not too many beaches.
Well, you know, you can miss a meeting once in a great while.
Yeah, that's right, you can. Um, is there any further discussion? I would entertain. Go ahead, Eric.
So I just, I did want to ask one other question and one other authorization. So um, in the supplemental information for the packet, uh, I did um, uh, add a a piece about um, some additional um, funding for the um, the design work for the fairgrounds project. Because we had added on uh, some additional um, uh, consulting work, um, we had uh, basically overextended the original budget. Um, uh, and as this has dragged on and we've had to do more planning work, uh, I I wanted to check in with Rick, who is our engineer, uh, and make sure that we had enough uh, resources to finish up with the um, the design work so we can have those reliable estimates for the public and for the select board and for everybody. Um, and he feels that that we we might be able to do it, but he would be very comfortable if we added five thousand uh, additional. Um, and uh, I would hope that we can get by without spending that, but I would like to get authorization from the board to do it if we need to, in order to finish this project to the level of completion that we need to.
So do you think that this will take us through to the end? No more money, no more planning, designing, this is it?
This would take us through to what we need to get through town meeting. Uh, if we have to do a full construction document, full construction design, that would come out of the 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 bond proceeds.
Gotcha.
So that would be a separate piece. This is just to wrap up the getting to that point.
And and it's it's an up to, might not need all five, but we just want to make sure that we have the money set aside.
That's correct. So I'd like to ask you to take that out of your contingency if possible.
What, what contingency part in those encumbered budgets have we taken this out of?
Select board contingency.
Sean? And Eric, didn't this include up to the EPA permitting?
Yeah, so this would get us through the.
A lot further than just because that's planning permitting too.
Yes, planning and permitting, but getting us to the point where if it's approved, we can, we can then go ahead and and do it, but um, we have uh, ongoing work that needs to happen, um, especially with the wetland issues.
I just don't want to keep, you know what I mean? Like, I just don't want to keep.
Yeah, no, and that was Rick's, Rick's point was that he doesn't want to go back to the well uh, too many times, and he's absolutely right.
Yeah.
So it says the original contract is for twelve thousand five hundred, and then there was additional stakeholder coordination at twelve hundred? Had we already approved that twelve hundred?
That was, that was their piece of the additional six or seven thousand we allocated for the Regina Leonard, um, the supplemental architectural review.
Um, so we're adding five thousand onto the total of thirteen thousand seven. So we're adding five thousand onto the total of thirteen thousand seven hundred. It's already been approved.
Yes, correct.
I'll make a motion to approve an additional five thousand dollars for revising the design to permit level for mainland construction for a total up to amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the additional permitting and planning funding. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Is that it, Eric?
That was it. It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor? Very well. Thank you very much. That is our meeting.